Let me get things started. It's 4:32 PM. On Monday, April 13th of 2020, this is a Zoom conference meeting with the City of Portland County Council. And I'm going to ask if you're all over eyes, if you're able, and pledge allegiance. Hi, pledge allegiance?
I think you need to start with an upbeat on that, Brian, so we're all on cadence.
I'm good. Maybe next time I'll just turn off all the microphones and you have to listen to me. We have one agenda item for consideration. I'd like to read the agenda item. And then I've got an opening statement to go with that. And then I'll look to entertain a motion to consider and discussion after that, if it pleases council. So agenda item number one, consideration of resolution to authorize the mayor to modify the city budget to compensate for a decrease in revenue projections. Council's asked to also approve the furlough of up to nineteen city employees and to approve the mayor about notifying staff. Dates of the furlough are from April 16, 12:01 AM, through July 30, 11:59 PM. Job descriptions of impacted positions will be shared after discussion with affected employees. So I ask you to bear with me. So if dealing with COVID-19 has forced us to change our operations within city government in the same way that we've asked everyone to change our living life, with the changes to people's habits, there is a sharp decline in the city's anticipated revenue from the state, sales tax, and other revenue generators. In order to keep the city fiscally sound, we have to make some tough financial decisions about expenditures for 2020, which is our current budget year. So I tasked Matt Cook with coming up with a projection of what our potential shortfall could be and also to suggest potential cost savings. However, as the chief fiscal officer, as a chief officer for the city, it falls to me, the mayor, to recommend to council steps that we can take. The budget adjustments are based upon our current reality that we have money we anticipated spending for services that we are actually currently now providing in some cases, and we may not see the circumstances change in the near future. Also, we are looking at cost reductions through changes in personnel staffing. And these decisions are not easy. I've stressed the importance of people first, and these changes will have an impact on everyone. However, with the actions that the federal government has taken to assist people when it comes to unemployment, our employees will be okay. I also know that without these changes, our budget planning for next year will be even more difficult. So I ask council to consider a slate of recommendations and to accept them all. For public knowledge, it's our intention, if this passes, to furlough nineteen employees through July 30 of this year. And at the July 21 coming council meeting, we will have recommendations about what we can do regarding further budget modifications if needed. I anticipate that if we take these steps today, we'll have the ability to bring back our employees this year. If we proceed, we will give our employees who are furloughed all the information that they need to navigate the process and to make sure that we work with them, make sure that their needs are met. We're going to continue to put people first. Now, if the current situation changes, the financial outlook looks better, and there's a lifting of restrictions within the state in terms of social distancing, I will ask council to bring back employees soon. If the situation... Every employee that we have, I think it's important to stress, every employee is essential to the city's functioning. This action, it will hurt our ability to provide some of our strongly desired services to the public, and internally, it will stress our systems. But by taking this decisive step now, in addition to creating additional strains on our operating systems, we'll be able to continue to provide our essential services, and we will protect our ability to return to normalcy in the future. I also know we will be one of the first governmental bodies making this type of tough decision. But mark my words, in coming weeks, we will hear about other cities, towns, villages, counties, and states doing the same. Private industry has already made some of these tough decisions. Nonprofits have already made these tough decisions. And as our neighbors, our friends, our constituents struggle to deal with the changes we are all facing, we need to also make changes and work to be responsible and accountable to the general public. And I want to make sure that I stress, emergency services will be there when there is a need. We're going to keep our citizens safe. We're going to endure this, and together, we will be stronger for it. So we need people to continue to practice social distancing to protect their neighbors and themselves, and we will persevere. To open the floor up officially, I'll ask to entertain a motion to consider the initial resolution. John Bennett, hand up, and support from Jackie Chapman. Discussion, we can go word by word, or we can go with the hand raises. Preference? Somebody raise their hand if they really would like to start first, otherwise I'm going to look at Kat McCarthy, and we'll go one through eight. Troy, I see your hand up. Troy, backward.
I first?
Yes.
Are we opening this all in one vote, or can we do it by line item?
We could talk about line items. One of the things I'd like to accentuate is the importance that we're talking about. Fact is, we're talking about people in terms of positions. And we need to stay away from names, job titles. And if we can talk as we go, Troy, is there an item, or is it in respect to a position?
A department.
All right. What would you like to discuss?
Well, discussion is one thing, but the vote, I think, I'd like to see it go down per item. And we don't need to mention anybody's names or whatever. It's just go item by item, because some of us might not be in favor for all nineteen, some of us might be. I mean, it's just, you know, take a census.
Makes sense. Okay. Let me expand my screen here.
Katie had a question.
Oh. Katie Solomon, question?
It looks as though, the way Matt's done it, that it's kind of a package deal. And that if we don't... If we don't align items, then we're going to have to come up with that elsewhere. And it's also, I understand that you talked to all the department heads. Is that right, Mayor?
Correct.
And were there any vociferous objections to what's been proposed?
I don't want to speak for any of our department heads.
What I saw in the email is that... Is that there's general understanding for why we need to do what's in front of us now, but that we're going to have to expect fewer city services as a result. But that was the only objection that I saw. Is that correct?
Well, you're absolutely correct that the goal, the intention in by presenting this as a slate is that the dollar numbers give us the best opportunity to weather some of the financial storm. And we are anticipating the need to potentially delve into reserves. But what we can do, and the projections that Matt is using, are not worst-case scenario. So if the situation becomes worse, we have additional issues, additional questions we'd have to answer. So I wouldn't say that department heads were 100% supportive. I think the explanation made sense, but it's difficult in a lot of cases to say that everybody would support the whole thing. What I'm asking council, though, is to support down the line, because if we start to take something out here, something out there, it makes it more difficult later.
Well, with all...
Oh, sorry. John Bennett had his hand up.
Okay.
Go ahead and finish, Katie. Katie, go ahead and finish.
Katie, back to you.
With all respect to Troy, I would like to vote on them as a package. So maybe we should decide first.
That's how I prefer that you do that. Someone should make that motion if they want to consider it separately. Otherwise, it's been the form of what it's been presented in the agenda.
Okay, going over to Bruce.
Can we at least pull out... I was assuming that this resolution includes the $726,000 that not addressed, non-staffing reductions that we sort of freeze now? And then, so we have that money, and if we don't need it, we can sort of unfreeze it and go on? Is this all part of that too, or we just talked for staffing here?
Not just staffing. This is the cross-board, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're looking at, in terms of staffing, a full-time employees close to 200,000. There's a number of other positions that would add up to a significant total.
Yeah, it's like 726,000. So could we pull those two apart at least, vote on the non-staffing staff, and then discuss staffing those two separately?
Well, how about we do this? Let's try to narrow it down based upon the item. So on the spreadsheet, the only item under council is attending conferences. Any objections? And then there's three under mayor, zoning officer, zoning board, planning board, training. I'm going to go past the personnel questions. CFA grant preparation and admin, finance, training, and education. When you hear something that you want to discuss, council, please speak up. Number 12, employee network, that actually...
I put that back in on the third quarter budget. So that's back in.
Okay. Building and grounds, downtown city hall and entrances landscaping. Computer replacement program, a reduction. City hall remote Wi-Fi improvements. Change to our insurance, what we're spending for our general liability. Now, we're increasing the deductible by about $25,000, and also the copen. Going to police budget overtime. Elimination of event coverage. Potential changes with shift filling. Reduction in the fuel line in police, training and education in police. Fire going to training, reduction in training and education. Codes department, reduction in fuel and vehicle repair lines. DPW, there's a cost share. It says administrative assistant. That position is vacant. There's $11,000 budgeted. We would not fill that position, is what would essentially happen. Engineering, grant writing, tuition for an employee. And we'll come back to personnel discussions. We are interspersed. Direct admin, printing of programs. I will touch upon summer maintenance workers, vehicle replacement, cleansing parks. Playgrounds, the program staff, operating equipment and equipment. And pools and beach, basically, we're talking about moldy man and wig wire potentially being closed through the end of July. And then youth services. Youth center, trips and events. And also the funding that we have for celebrations that would be awards for different events. Troy, anything there before we talk personnel? No. Anybody else, council?
You mean besides personnel?
Besides personnel?
Besides personnel? Not any questions besides personnel?
Jackie Chapman, hand raises.
Hi, I just have a question. There it is. Oh, overtime for police. If, if in case of... Wouldn't happen but a severe emergency that entailed they were having to go, would we revisit that?
I'm sorry, could you... An emergency where? If you can sit farther forward. I had a little bit of a hard time hearing you initially.
Sorry. If there was a severe emergency and it was going into overtime, for the police, would we revisit that?
Yeah. Yeah, it would not completely eliminate overtime. There's a couple of specific situations where overtime is budgeted for ID special events. And if we're not having special events, then the expectation is we would not need the money budgeted for it. Other questions?
You still going by each councilman, or you're just doing the hand raises, or what are you doing there, Mayor?
Tom, you got the microphone. You're up. We're going by hand raises.
All right. Chips funding, as either has been mentioned, and putting some of that out for next year?
Yep. One of the prospects, one of the things that will happen is the only paving projects that would take place are the ones that are funded through state dollars that are already committed. So the Clinton Street, the Clinton Avenue project, for example. But our residential street paving that is funded solely through CHIPS, two reasons. I mean, we can talk a little bit about personnel, but the other concern and consideration is that the CHIPS funding is not guaranteed. Governor said that he could promise us $100, but if only 95 is there, then we would get 95. If we were to start paving projects and we don't have the funding, we could get stuck in the middle of the projects and be on the hook and not have that CHIPS funding later. Same concern in terms of state aid. I'm sure many of you read that the school districts, their state aid is being frozen. Our state aid has been frozen for a very long time. But the same rules could apply, where we may not get the funding that we've gotten in past years. And the governor's been very upfront, saying that he anticipates a almost $10 to $15 billion shortfall in the state budget, and the federal package will cover about 3.6 to 3.8. So he's anticipating seven to 12 billion more in terms of the state deficit. And that's also not knowing financials going forward. John Bennett has a hand up.
Yes, as a reminder for everybody here, to remember, the chip money is not money we've received yet. It is money, if I am correct, and Matt would confirm this, it is money that is...
We reimburse.
After the job is done. Though if we were to start milling right now, the streets, which we normally start this time of year, but then we wait till August or September for SUCO to come into payment, well, if by that point, the governor has cut to use the chip money, we're stuck with those roads milled, unless now we want to go out and spend money we don't have, or we can just hope that we do not get too much of a reduction, roll everything into next year, and plan on everything next year. I would hope, and I would think, most of our constituents will understand. But again, we don't get the chip money upfront.
Katie Solomon?
If we got some chip money, would we be able to hang on to this year's and hold it with next year's? Or would next year's be decreased by whatever we got this year and didn't use?
Again, we don't receive it until the job is done. So if, right now, currently, if we were to receive $80,000 for this year, then it gets cut down to 60. Even if we don't use that amount, it will, that 60 will roll into next year.
Katie, yeah, it's not a use it or lose it environment. What we use this year, it rolls to next year.
Kat McCarthy?
If we're looking at moving off paving until next year, would we have the capacity to do twice as much paving next year as we do this year, given our current, given staffing and whatnot?
If I can answer that, there are some of us that are on council that it's back some years ago, more than doubled in one year because we received, the state gave extra chip money. And we thought, oh, great, we're going to be able to more than double new streets, and this should ease the problem down the road. Well, DPW and SUCO was able to easily handle the number of streets we increased it to. Of course, the other streets worn out just as fast. So it was a 50/50 proposition. Yes, we were able to do the additional streets, and this is now back six to seven years ago. So I have no concern that DPW would not be able to handle it next year.
Bruce?
Troy had his hand up first. Go ahead, Troy.
All right, Troy.
I'd have to argue with that point. The only reason I believe in that, or I feel different in that, is the fact that, you know, because other municipalities are going to be in the same boat, that everybody's going to be putting stuff off, and just the demand is going to be overwhelming next year, that I don't think anybody's going to be able to do double. Not in circumstances, you know, normal year, yes, but next year, I don't think it's going to be possible.
Okay, Bruce Knightler?
Yeah, I'm... Well, Troy's saying this year, right now, the oil is relatively cheap, and it's going to go up a little bit, but again, none of us have finished the ball, so we can say, nobody knows for sure what's going to happen in the next month or next year, whatever. So we all, I understand that. And I agree with most of what you and Matt have put together, and it makes all makes perfect sense to me. I do have some questions about one department, though, because, and I do have some sincere questions about whether we're better off in the long run not doing any paving. I mean, let's face it, some of these streets are really rough already. They'd be better off, literally, if you ground them down and just left them that way, and if we couldn't repave them to the next year, they'd still be in better shape than they are right now. So I'm okay with, let's try it some. We have to pave some trees. Plus, I'm concerned about, and maybe this is an unnecessary concern, maybe you or Matt can handle. If we have some kind of natural disaster, can we call these people back off the furlough in 24 hours to help us clean up? I mean, we're assuming that some of these departments, this wonderful, they're going to be down, and they do physical work, and everybody might get hurt. They're going to be sick. They need to take vacations. I'm concerned about manpower in that department, providing the necessary services, the basic necessary services we need in this difficult time. And, you know, if we have to dip into our reserve a little bit, well, there's never been a rainy day like this one, and that's for sure. And all of us, we don't even have any history to look back on. And say, well, this is how we did it last time, this is how we look at it, all in shattered waters. And I'm just really concerned if we don't do any paving this year. I'm with Troy. I'm not convinced we can double our, next year. Plus, we may need somebody else to help us with things.
Well, when it comes time for paving, we're going to do what we've done. And that's where, we don't have all the paving equipment. We rent it, we come in, and we've not had issues in terms of getting the appropriate equipment for the right time, the right weeks. The anticipation for potentially carrying it over to next year. In addition to the equipment, we need the personnel. If we got the personnel, we're not seeing potential cost avoidance. So I get it, and it's been an involved discussion. Talked with our superintendent of public works multiple times about this. This is what we think makes the most sense for the city for this year in dealing with this crisis. Phil Carpenter?
I talked to Chris at night. And not only is it a, I mean, he's our department head. We have to listen to what he has to tell. He's the professional. We also have to look at the fact that we've had, I've had complaints before where the street's not completed, and it's dusty, and it's all banged up for a couple of months, and it's all ground down. We're going to be in the same situation if you start a project and you can't complete it. The constituents are going to complain about it. We're going to be hearing it from that end. Also, there's a safety issue. You're knocking down four guys that were doing projects this summer paving. There's an issue where there's not enough manpower on those routes to beat those streets and do those roads. I think that's an issue Chris is concerned about also. We can't be doing projects where there's not enough manpower. Like Chris said, in July, a lot of the other people have time off. You've got to consider that. They had their time off. It's a morale issue, and they won't get their time off. So all those factors, I think, are pretty big.
Mayor, can I address something that Bruce was concerned about?
Please, and then we'll go to Bruce.
Bruce, your concern about the rising fuel prices is valid. A few years ago, we were in the same situation. We prepaid $400,000 against next year's paving. SUCO took the deal. And that, in thinking that, they locked in, locked in at the current price.
Okay.
So we can price protect ourselves.
All right, that's good to know. That answered your question?
And we have done that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Most clear.
I, I'm still, you know, I talked to Chris, too, and I didn't get a sense that he thought these were, this was a good idea. And we won't be able to do some things. And I get that we may not be able to mow the grass like usual, or maybe slow response or brush pickup. And I understand all that, and I understand, you know, that we might not be able to finish a road. I don't know the ins and outs of how many roads we grind at once, if we grind all of them at once, or if we grind them one at a time, or what, or if we... I'm pretty sure if we mill one down, we could finish one street or two streets. We could, you know, I know it, but if we had to dip into reserve, which I, you know, would want to do, but if we had to do fewer streets, we could do that. We could cover that. For me, it's just, the benefit doesn't seem worth the cost. What we gain doesn't seem to make equal what it's costing us in terms of services. You talk about safety, it's definitely more safe than a good street. And some of these streets are in horrible shape, and they're going to have to be, some aren't even on the dock to be done this year, so they're going to have to be done next year. So anyhow, and I don't want to keep beating a dead horse. I'm saying what I believe to be in the best interest from my perspective of the community. I agree with almost all these cost-saving measures. If we have to dip into reserve a little bit, we dip into reserve a little bit. That's where I'm standing.
Well, part of the problem is not just dipping into the reserve a little bit. It's what will happen this year, and then the cash projections that will put us through January to next year. And again, this is not even the most dire prediction, worst-case scenario. But we need to be thinking ahead, and the decisions we make today will impact us throughout the fall and into next year. We will probably be going into reserves for this year, and we will probably be going into reserves next year. Because one of the questions, council, you need to ask yourself, when we do our budget planning for next year, for 2021, how much of an increase in terms of the tax rate do you want to ask of the general public after whatever this year ends up looking like?
I understand that, Mayor. I get all that. I understand completely. I spent a lot of time looking at these numbers, and Matt spent a lot of time explaining this to me. I get that, and I understand what could be down the road, that could, you know, prepare for the worst hope and best. I understand all that. What I'm saying is, I'm not talking about, it's a lot of money to me personally. It's not a lot of money in terms of a multimillion dollar budget. And again, I don't think what... And I, and again, I don't think what we're gaining from that equals what we're gonna get in return. And we still have plenty to work, to, to, to fix that rainy day fall for next year. It's not like I'm saying depleted, I'm not saying that at all. So I get that, but, you know, not to pay many streets is, is huge, especially the condition of some of our streets. And to deplete the department, like, nobody answered that question. Can we bring them back on a twenty-four or twenty-eight hour notice if we have some big storm and we need manpower to help us take care of it? Which has happened before in the past as well. That's something I can look back and say, hey, that wasn't handled. Four or five years ago, it was brand new.
Question on unemployment was, yes, you can. They would then deduct that from their state benefits for any, any wages earned in that week.
Okay, that's what, you know.
John Bennett.
Well, beginning with, the mayor did answer some of the things that was getting going up as far as not the reserves. Yes, the reserves are there for, if we wanna say rainy day. Um, some of us do remember back years ago, the city had a reserve of barely over a hundred thousand dollars. And as of today, it is still not up to what the state normally would mandate it should be. And I'm not saying we're not gonna use it. Uh, pretty much since the 2020 budget was done, it was understood that we would be having to dip into the reserve for the 2021 budget. Now, there are some things that you need to remember. Anytime that budget number goes down, and if it starts to go down significantly, it does affect our bond rating. Okay? Which now means those interest rates that we've been able to get at extremely low prices on bonds or any loans are gonna be back up there again. Okay? That's number one. Number two, if you don't wanna take out of the reserves and you feel that, well, we can still go ahead and do this one street or do the second street, and that might only be for two of them, seventy thousand or sixty thousand dollars. Let me ask you, where do you want to replace that with? Where do you wanna find seventy thousand dollars in revenue to replace that with? Going into the 2020 budget, we lost revenue. The state took revenue away from us, and again, I am very confident come June or July, we will be losing more revenue from the state. Let alone going into the 2021 budget. We will probably be losing revenue from the state. So my question needs to be, anybody that is afraid of, we can't, we need to do one street or two street. How are you gonna cover those costs down the road? Are you willing two, three, four, five percent tax increase? It's very hard to do.
I respect your opinion, I respect, John, I respect your opinion, okay, and I get it. And I'm not saying I'm right and you're wrong by any means. I'm saying I have a different perspective. And I think we have put together one heck of a plan to save money. Yes, everybody realizes revenues are gonna be down. Nobody knows how much revenues are gonna be down. Nobody knows exactly what these, nobody can forecast the future. I get that. I just have a different perspective, that's all. I, 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 I don't mind that we're slicing the budget by this much. I'm just asking to maybe reduce that cut by this much so we can still do a few good things here for people in this community. That's all I'm saying. I, you know, I don't wanna get back into a back and forth. I, that's just my belief. And I don't think it's, I don't think it's gonna throw any budget way out of whack to keep, to keep some of us aside and do some paving a little bit. I'm not talking about a million dollars. So, you know, and, and I get what you're saying, I respect, I respect your opinion too, you know, I'm believing with that.
Well, let me, let me ask you, Bruce, if you had, let's say, six streets were listed to be done this year, and the decision comes to one, and the public knows that, and the public sees, well, you're doing this one street, why does that one street take precedent over, let's say, Pleasant Street?
Well, I would pick either of the two, but for me, I'd pick whichever one was worse, and I think people understand that. People don't understand that it's not business as usual. They're gonna get that there's gonna be fewer things done, so this is a good one to have.
What they've done would say that their street was the worst. But that's my opinion.
Well, I, I guess we're okay, that's fine.
We can, we can agree to disagree.
Yes.
Heard the discussion about paving projects.
I'm thinking that we just, uh, we just stay the course. Nobody knows how this is gonna play out in two months, uh, four months, or six months. Uh, trying to, there'll be seeing a, a second wave. Uh, I'm thinking, uh, you know, let's, let's stay the course, and if, uh, things, uh, happen to come out out of sunny side of things, then we'll be it.
James Solomon.
As we're able to add people back on the payroll, we could start with that department that people are the most concerned about.
Yeah, now, um, obviously, we've set a deadline, so to speak, of July thirtieth. And there's a couple of reasons for this. Uh, from the financial perspective, it gives a set period of time, and it affects a certain amount in terms of dollars for cost savings. Uh, from a service provision point of view, like I said earlier, we will see our system stressed. And it's gonna be kinda like taking a breath of air and going underwater. How long can you hold your breath for? So there's a little bit of risk here that this is going to be a long time, uh, but we think this is manageable. Um, like I said, we also know that this is what I would call a soft landing for employees. And the idea is that we're gonna work with them to make sure they're taken care of. By starting this effect of this week going through July, we're, we're not gonna see changes in the next couple of weeks. I think we're missing out if we push this decision off actually, because things might get better. And, uh, for us to have the opportunity to rebound and to take advantage, not just if, but when things get better, we, we need to make some of these decisions now when things are not good. Uh, in terms of making the decisions by saying, we made this decision in April, and we're sticking with it until our July twenty-first meeting, we're not anticipating coming back and saying, okay, we need additional cuts, we need additional furloughs. What we're saying to our employees is we made a decision and we're going to stick by this for a couple of months. Which in and of itself is a gamble, because again, this is not worst case scenario. If things do get worse, we may have other stressors. But for the peace of mind of all of our employees, I thought it was important that we have a set period so that people know what to expect.
Uh, there you are, Matt.
But should we decide if we want to vote on it as a package or one of them?
So I believe what Rick said earlier is present it as a package, and if, uh, you wanna break items out, then we would need a motion to consider breaking that item out. Uh, and it wouldn't be approving that item, it would be breaking the item out. So Troy, your hand up.
I can give a motion for, uh, I'll make a motion that we line item it or per department.
Yeah, I picked one.
Which, which one, Troy? Do you wanna go line item or by department?
Per department.
Okay, so it's a motion on the floor to consider by department. Does that have a second?
Can I, can I ask, can I ask a question before I have a second? Or do I have to put the second and then answer this question?
Go ahead, ask the question.
Are we, are we, are we looking at this, I'm just a little confused. Are we gonna vote on the non-staffing cuts and then the staffing cuts? Or, uh, that's, that's sort of why I, I felt we were going, so I guess I'm, maybe you can clarify what we're doing here.
It's, um, on the agenda, one, one item, one resolution. Authorize the mayor to modify the city's budget, compensate for a decrease in revenue. Uh, and part of that, asking to approve furlough of up to nineteen employees, and to approve the mayor notifying staff. Uh, and then the dates are included in job descriptions will be shared later.
So can we modify the resolution? Can we modify to have two different, uh, two of the sides to it?
Gotta have motion or a second.
Well, the motion that's on the floor, uh, actually modify it was from Troy.
Okay, read that, read that to me again, I forgot already.
Okay. Troy, the, uh, modification to the original motion is to consider it by departments, correct?
Yeah, it's like it's on the, on the agenda, line items.
Okay, I'll second that.
Wait a minute, Troy, line items, each item by itself or each department?
Well, I mean, I say line items, you got one, one department's got one person, you got other departments got multi-people, so we do it. Per, I said per department, I'm sorry, but I'm not line, I say line items, I mean per department.
Okay, so by each line item.
Are you saying each department by line item?
Yeah, it's like one department's got four line items, so.
There you go, okay. Well, that's the motion.
Yeah.
So if it's four items in one department, it would be considering that one department, not four items in one. No?
That's not what I'm saying, to get it on the floor. I'll, I'll second it to get it on the floor.
Well, I wanna make sure I understand. Troy, are we going by department or each item on the list?
By department.
Okay. So we have a motion from Troy, second from Bruce. Uh, let's do roll call vote, because I don't know how this will shake out, and we're starting with the first ward going through the eight. I means that you wanna go in pieces by departments, and nay means you wanna stick with the original resolution. First ward.
Nay.
Sorry?
Nay.
Second ward.
Nay.
Third. Yes. Fourth.
Nay.
Fifth.
Nay.
Six.
Nay.
Seven.
Aye.
And eight. Nay. And, motion passes two-six. So we still have the original motion on the floor. Any further discussion?
Well, can I make a different motion? Can I make a motion that we separate it out from staff and non-staffing, um, reductions?
Yes, but you need a second.
Can I make that motion? I make the motion, now we have the, the non-staff, which is a seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, we separate from the staffing a little over two hundred thousand. I'd like to go down those as two separate items.
Actually, Bruce, that would make it very easy up from the county, because that way we can make two different journal entries. And if circumstances improve, we can reverse in one swift move to seven hundred and twenty-six. So actually, having two journal entries would, would greatly help.
Okay, thanks, Matt.
So if I heard correctly, we got a motion from Bruce and then a second from Troy, breaking it out into two, um, two items. One, staffing, and other item would be all other expenditures. And with staffing, you're referring to full-time city employees, correct?
Uh, I'm referring to whatever's included in that two hundred and five thousand dollar piece, so I guess so. People are furloughed, they're furloughed. I'm not, yes, yes.
Okay, so officially, the resolution is to consider, um, consider approval of the furloughing of up to nineteen full-time city employees, that'll be first one. And then second one, uh, city budget modifications for other budget lines related to part-time employees and all other.
Yeah, yes, that's what I, that's what I would, you know, better freeze that money now, because once it's done, we won't do it back.
Make sure I got my notes. Okay, so that's a motion on the floor. Troy has a second, and we're asking everybody to vote the same. If you're voting for it, we're splitting it into two. First ward.
Yes.
Second.
Yes.
Third.
Yes.
Fourth.
Yes.
Fifth.
Yes.
Sixth.
Yes.
Seventh.
Aye.
Eight. Yes. Alright, so the motion pass is eight-zero. So now, motion on the floor, resolution authorize the ma, mayor to modify the city budget, um, by approving furlough of up to eighteen full-time city employees. We have a motion to consider that officially. John Bennett, second. Bill Carpenter. We've had plenty of discussion, agreed?
Yes.
Roll call vote. Starting with the first ward.
Aye.
Second.
Yes.
Third.
No.
Fourth.
Yes.
Fifth.
Yes.
Sixth.
Yes.
Seventh. No. Eight. Yes. Motion passes six-two. And the other agenda item became consideration of resolution to authorize the mayor to modify the city budget, uh, by decreasing part-time personnel lines and all other lines as outlined in the attached document. Motion to consider, I see John Bennett, and we have Bill Carpenter, we have support. Kat, we're back to you.
Yes.
Second ward.
Yes.
Mayor?
Third ward.
Mayor. Mayor started, but you did not ask for discussion.
Ah. Any further discussion? Kat, would you like to, please restate your vote, Kat?
Yes.
Thank you. Eight.
Yes.
Third ward.
Yes.
Fourth.
Yes.
Fifth.
Yes.
Sixth.
Yes.
Seventh.
No.
Eight. Yes. Motion passes seven-one. Any further discussion or business to come before council this evening?
Well, I just appreciate the thought, the reflection, I live in this really tough community, so, thank you, folks. It's, uh, this was not easy. And Matt and Mayor put this together, and Rick's advice, I just, I appreciate it.
Let's just, let's just hope that something starts to go good for everybody. But I, I tend to think as they have, to there is a vaccine, I think it can be a very long summer. And I'm afraid to say, unfortunately, that there'll be a second wave. I really hope not. I really, really hope not. But what we can do is wait and see.
Alright, so steps going forward. I plan to notify department heads, and we will have meetings with affected employees. Uh, department heads, union representation, where appropriate, will be invited to sit in on said meetings to make sure that we're keeping everybody informed and apprised. And, uh, we'll be having some challenges that we'll have to address in terms of making, uh, we recognize this. And it's not gonna be easy. But let me conclude by saying that this is, these are all essential employees. And like I said earlier, it's like taking a deep breath, going underwater, and seeing how long you can hold your breath. We will need employees back. Uh, I greatly appreciate all the time and the effort, and what everybody has done and continues to do. You know, it's not just job, it's a commitment, and I'm very proud of what everybody on the city staff is doing and has been doing. So this is in no way a reflection on job performance, et cetera. These are hard decisions, but making some of the hard decisions now will position us better later. And council, I thank you for your consideration and the rational dialogues. I've been disagreed at times, but that's part of the political process. So. Having nothing else to come before the council, I'll ask to entertain a motion to adjourn. Got it from Kat McCarthy? Second, John Bennett, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and both. Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned, and we shall persevere. Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned and we shall persevere, thank you.
See you folks.
Bye bye.